Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the November 21st, 2022 Crest Hill City Council Meeting to order. If everyone will please rise for the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, man still in public, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Ray Solomon. Von Conklin. Scott Dyke.
Here.
John Rocha.
Here.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yeah.
Claudia Gazal.
Here.
Tina Oberlin.
President.
Mark Sepiti.
Here.
Nate Albert.
Here.
And Joe Kuba.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, you have before you the minutes of the city council meeting held on November 7th, 2022. Motion would be in order?
So moved.
We have a motion by Alderman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Rocha, for the approval of the minutes of the November 7th, 2022 city council meeting. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Rocha.
Yeah.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
And Joe Kuba.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
And you have before you the minutes of the Crest Hill City Council work session held on November 14th, 2022. Motion will be in order.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Dyke, for the approval of the work session minutes held on November 14th, 2022. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
John Rocha.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuba.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, we do not have a business promotion this evening, so we'll continue with the agenda items. First is our city attorney, Mike Steph. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, mayor and council. I do not have any agenda items tonight. Would you be happy to answer any questions?
Any questions of city attorney?
Or try to answer any questions?
All right, thanks, Mike. Moving on to our city administrator, Jim Marino. Good evening, Jim.
Good evening, mayor and council. I have a few items for you tonight. The first one is approval of change orders for the city center. In your packet, you've got four change orders, one for Tim Electric, two for Flooring First, and one for Adler Roofing and Sheet Metal. This is for work that is being done on the city center that was approved previously with an amendment to the budget, so these are ready for approval tonight.
So the two for Flooring First, in your memo, in the summary, you mentioned Tim Electric and Adler Roofing were not included, so they were not voted on on November 7th?
Correct.
So was Flooring First in that original change order, or did that come later?
No, that came later.
Should that be done as one or separately?
Well, previously, you voted on them separately.
I'm just making sure.
But it does say that this was included in the November 7th meeting, but it wasn't.
Flooring First.
If you pull the minutes.
They need to be voted on.
Okay, let's do them individually, and you can lead the way, Jim.
Can I have a motion for a change order with Tim Electric in the amount of $8,985,000?
It says $8,985,000 there.
Am I supposed to call for the motion, or are you, mayor?
I could do it if you'd like. I was gonna let you do it, but...
Well, isn't that how we've done it in the past?
Well, we have.
I'm just asking, Zal and Ron.
It's $8,985,000.
No, I know, but you said $8,985,000.
$8,985,000.
I just wanted it corrected, because you said $8,500, so...
I'm sorry.
No, I just want the record correct. So moved, just presented. Second.
You had it, didn't you, Darrell?
Yeah.
Who seconded it down here?
Nobody. Did you second? No, he made the motion, but he didn't get the second.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderman Person Oberlin, for the approval of a change order with Tim Electric for construction work at city center in amount of $8,985,000. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuba.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Rocha.
Yes.
And Claudia Gazal.
Yes. I already said yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
I get to vote twice.
Motion carries. Thank you. Yes, vote for Darrell.
Okay, next one you have is the approval of a change order with Flooring First Incorporated for construction work at the city center in amount of $800,000.
So moved. Second.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Jefferson, for the approval of a change order with Flooring First for construction work at city center in amount of $800,000. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuba.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Rocha.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
And Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, next you have an approval of a change order with Flooring First Incorporated for construction work at city center in amount of $21,998.16.
So moved. I'll second it.
We have a motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Jefferson, for the approval of a change order with Flooring First for construction work at city center in amount of $21,998.16. Questions or comments?
I had a question. Jim, I emailed you about the Flooring First work. I believe you said that that was to repair the floor damage from the sprinkler head incident?
Correct.
So would this money, was insurance money obtained to pay for this replacement floor?
Yes, it was.
But we still got to go through this process? Okay. And this was the amount? So we got it from insurance, this amount?
No, we got the amount from the vendor. The amount for the materials and the work is from the vendor. And we submitted that to the insurance company, and then the insurance company, they had already sent us a payment. They gave us a prepayment for the work to be done. We've already received $180,000 from them. Even before, even before all the work was done, within a month probably of the incident, they gave us a check and they prepaid for the work.
So this was all covered by that $180,000?
Correct.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuba.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Rocha.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
And Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, next one is approval of a change order with J.L. Adler Roofing and Sheet Metal Incorporated for construction work at city center in amount of $46,460,000.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Person Oberlin, for the approval change order with J.L. Adler Roofing for $46,460,000. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuba.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
And John Rocha.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, the next item is an agreement with Comcast for Ethernet network services for equipment between municipal buildings. That includes our municipal facilities, water plants, and well locations. This includes 11 managed routers. Comcast, through this agreement, offers managed router service that provides network design engineering services, 24/7 monitoring of hardware and network activity, replacement of failing equipment at no additional cost, network changes and upgrades at no additional cost.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Person Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Gazal, for the approval of a 60-month agreement with Comcast for Ethernet network services and managed routers in the amount of $5,031 per month, plus taxes and fees with a one-time installation construction fee of $2,200,000. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuba.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Rocha.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
And Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, the next item before you is a contract or agreement for managed services for our computer network. You have a managed service agreement and proposal from All Information Systems, Inc., to provide computer network maintenance and technical support following the departure of our IT director. AIS was selected from three companies that were considered primarily for their significant Illinois municipal and police department experience, fact that they had tech immediately available for onboarding. They have a local office in Opfer Caris. They offer a monthly contract, and they meet the police department's security requirements. The monthly fee covers time spent for network monitoring and maintenance, tech to provide network and user support onsite and remote technical support. Monthly fee provides a block of 200 hours for the coming month. Number of hours from the block is deducted as work is performed based on the rate schedule shown in the agreement. For the time being, AIS will provide techs onsite five days a week until such time as they become acclimated to our network and familiar with user technical support needs. The number of hours will be reduced as needed. The monthly cost will fluctuate depending on the number of hours utilized each month. I expect in the next couple of weeks, AIS will be able to reduce their number of hours and do more work remotely, because they would be more familiar with our network and our configuration. I thought it was important that I bring them in on an emergency basis before our IT director left, which was last week. By doing that, that only gave their techs four days last week to work with Tim, to transition and hand off everything about the network to the AIS techs, so that they would be able to manage the system beginning this week, when Tim was no longer here. Felt this was necessary to provide good continuity of services for our employees and for the community. As you know, our services are heavily dependent on technology, and we need the technology to be reliable without disruption to our computer network and technical support that employees need. So AIS was brought on because we felt that they were the best company. This is on an as-needed basis to get us through this immediate need. Until such time, we hire another IT director, if we so choose to do that, or until such time as we may decide to go with them long-term or bring in another company if the council so chooses. There's two texts here from, or two representatives from AIS here to answer any questions you may have.
Jim, I just have one question, and it's about the $28,000. Do we need to make some type of change, because there's not a limit, like 20,000 a month?
What kind of change are you looking for?
You know, I mean, I think our ordinance, something that said we can only go like 20 grand a month for emergency-type service or something, so this isn't considered emergency-type service?
I would consider it emergency-type service.
Oh, no. I think the ordinance was referring to how much a department head or city administrator could spend without having to wait for the next meeting to be voted on for approval. They could approve it without councils.
20,000 is the cap, was it not, Mike?
I think it was...
That's the purchasing policy.
Yeah, that was it, purchasing. It was a purchasing policy.
And it states 20,000 in there, right?
Yes, the amount was 20,000.
Do you have that with you?
I do not.
Can you look it up at all?
I mean, I'm in favor of moving forward. I just don't want to violate our word.
It's not wanting to let me on my office server. So at this point, no, I can't.
Well, let me ask you this, Mike. We will still be within our...
Well, it's before you tonight for a vote, so you can vote on it.
I don't know what the alternative is. We were in a situation where we had to use the new company coming in to gather some information before the past IT director left. That was imperative for the transfer of the information.
Again, let me clarify. I'm not in favor of moving forward. I'm only trying to make sure that language-wise, we're okay with going over.
I think his concern is we're breaking our own ordinance and rules, basically. If the ordinance states one thing and we're doing totally something different, that's what he's trying to do.
But the city administrator kept everybody informed, the process he was going through as he was going through it.
That's not true.
Emails were sent. Updates were given.
Not before...
Not before the contract was approved.
Well, again, due to time restraints, he was kind of at a no-win situation. Because if he would have waited for another two weeks before we met, then all that information, that knowledge, would have been lost. And what would you have done in the interim without anybody here for two weeks?
But you're saying we were kept apprised of the whole process, and that's just not accurate there. Would you retract your comment?
All that needed to be done was a phone call to the city administrator.
About what?
All that needed to be done.
About what?
Well, you were notified that the resignation was in place.
So I have to...
You didn't expect him, did you expect him to sit on it for two weeks and do nothing?
No, I expected him to inform us what he was planning on doing. That's all we expect.
It's just transparency and communication.
If this helps, I don't believe we've written a check for over $20,000, which could have been done above that amount for an emergency situation. What you have before you is the ability to approve or not allow this, so this is not out of bounds.
It says right here, emergency purchase is under 20,000. Under 20,000.
I think we discussed this enough last work session, and we tried to make the point, but it seems like we're having some communication issues at this point. No one wants to agree that the way it was handled was wrong. I'm not saying, as a administrator, he should not be able to do this. Like I said in the last work session, it will have been a quick email of what is happening. The email was sent to us on Friday after the people were hired and they started on Monday. Am I correct, or I'm making up stories?
You are.
It was sent on Thursday.
Okay. And basically, what I feel is like we find ourselves in a position that we are being forced to make quick and expensive decisions to keep the city functioning. Again, I agree with Alderman Jefferson. We have to vote on this tonight, because by stopping it, we're not going to be business-friendly. We need to get to work. I understand. But again, it's called communication, and it looks like we're having disagreement on how we're supposed to communicate here. It's a simple email, doesn't take more than five minutes, if that, to send an email, say, this is where we are, this is what's happening. And since the council has to vote, the council should have the choice and the option of choosing, you recommend, we vote. You make the recommendation of why you're choosing this company, and we say, yes, let's go with this, I agree with you, blah, blah, blah. But at this point is, once again, we put in a position where it's an emergency, and we have to vote on something that's $28,000. And as I stated earlier to you back there, I will vote for this, because we have no other choice, but I will hope that you will find a company that's going to be more reliable and less money for that. Have we contacted other municipalities, see how they do their business and their computers and their IT?
No.
Maybe it's time for us to start contacting other municipalities, see how they function when they have a disaster, or every time someone exits, it seems like we're having issues in here.
Does not AIS have other municipal clients?
Yes.
Do we have a list of those municipalities that they service?
Yes, they do.
Correctly.
Another thing is, it just bothers me, and I know I'm going to go on and on, whoever feels that when I walk out, this is your opportunity, you can walk out, just like the work session, it doesn't bother me at all anymore. This is my right as elected official, and it is my duty to ask questions. And correct me, Mr. Attorney, what is the elected official responsibility? Are we allowed to ask questions?
Of course.
Okay. So I don't know why there's always like the roll eye, the aggravation, the rude response when not picking. I think I have reached out to all of you in here. I have offered the other branch, I have offered my opinion, I have offered to work with most of you here, but when I ask a question, I said to you in the last work session, I understand you're under pressure. I get it. I get it. We're not saying here, you didn't came to a big problem, and maybe you're not able to handle what's happening. I understand, but there's no reason for this frustration, and even you, mayor. You know, you guys like call us crazy, they don't know what they're doing, they're always causing problems, people are leaving because of council. The council's not here every day, but when you give me any contract, if it's for dollar or $100,000, and if I have a question, I am going to ask that question, because in the end, we are responsible here. I'm getting tired of disrespect. There's constant disrespect here for some of us. I don't know what is it. I don't know what is it, why some are so favorite and some are disrespected constantly. I'm not asking to be the favorite child here. I'm just asking to be respected when I ask a question, to be answered correctly.
Is there a motion on the table?
Well, my question hasn't been answered. Are we going to look for a reliable company that's going to be a lot cheaper in the meantime? I will vote on this, but this is temporary, right, you said earlier?
Yeah.
This is until we find a solution. But are we looking like two, three, four, five months? How long are we looking to spend that money for?
Well, my plan was until I hired a new IT director, and I don't know at this point in time how long that would take.
Well, it's something I think we need to put on the agenda as well, to see even if it's even worse to hire an IT, not to hire a company, because IT director will leave if it's a day off, or sick, or vacation. The city, look where we are right now. If you have a company, if one person leaves, you have a backup, correct? Like you as a company, don't you have backup? And it's something that we need to sit and discuss as a group here, since we're all going to vote on this, to see what is the best solution and option for the city, because we need to move forward, we need to function, we can't keep stopping and trying to find a solution.
Is there a motion for approval management service agreement with All Information Services for computer network maintenance?
So moved, just presented. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Jefferson. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Joe Kuba.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Rocha.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
No.
Mark Sepiti.
No.
And Nate Albert.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Jim, I want to make a public thank you to you, because I know the work that you put into this in a very short amount of time. Nearly the whole week, you interviewed the three companies, you did all the legwork, and by far, AIS was the most competent to take over for our situation here. They have the municipal experience, they've been around a long time. So I want to thank you for all the hard work that you did to bring it to this table, that we didn't miss a beat, we still haven't missed a beat, and life is going on, even though the IT director has found other employment. So I just want to thank you for the time that you spent on this. The information that you gave everybody in this packet is above and beyond, so I just want to say thank you. Are there any questions for the city administrator?
No, and I want to thank you for respecting the council opinion.
All right, moving on.
I have a comment, just moving forward with the IT director position. I'm requesting that, if you would please, Jim, include it in your administrator report to the city council, the status of filling that position, so we're kept in, you know, informed along the way. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Public Works Department, our director of public works, Mark Seifer. Good evening, Mark.
Good evening, mayor and council. I have no agenda items for this evening, I just have two reminders. The first is that on December 3rd at 10:00 a.m., we will be having our 30th annual holiday parade. More information and the route will be released next week. Hopefully, everybody can walk out, hopefully have a nice day, and everybody put some candy and see Santa. The second reminder I have is that next Monday, at Public Works, due to a grant, we will be giving away 100 smoke detectors to the first 100 residents or households that come to Public Works, starting at 8:00 a.m. on Monday, Monday, the 28th. This is through a grant with FM Global. They purchased 100, they gave us the money to purchase 100 smoke detectors, so all we ask is that residents come between 8:00 and 3:00 p.m., and they do show proof, they show a water bill for proof of residency, and one smoke detector per household. It's a great time of year, as we always see the commercials for replace your batteries, what a Christmas tree can do if you don't have a smoke detector in your house, so we think this is a great time to be giving these out to some of the families in Crest Hill. With that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Okay, I got an inquiry from a resident about the two bus benches that are on Route 30 and Sweetbrier, that they're blocking visuals, and it's very dangerous. If we could possibly look into a remedy for that?
Yeah, we'll look into those tomorrow. I will have Engineer Weidman and Assistant Director Klein look at both those, and if we have to have those moved or have some sort of accommodation made, we can definitely do that and work with the company.
Thank you so much.
No problem.
Any other questions of Public Works? All right, thanks, Mark. Moving on to our city engineer, Ron Weideman. Good evening, Ron.
Thank you, mayor. It's our one item tonight, looking for a motion to approve an ordinance amending the city of Crest Hill comprehensive plan by approving and adopting the inclusion of the Division and Weber Business Park Subarea Plan as an auxiliary chapter. This was presented to council at the October 10th workshop. I can ask, are there any questions you have?
So moved, just second.
You made the motion? Motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Jefferson.
Aye.
Over an ordinance amending the city of Crest Hill comprehensive plan by approving Or an ordinance amending the City of Crest Hill Comprehensive Plan by approving and adopting the inclusion of the Division and Weber Business Park Subarea Plan as an auxiliary chapter there, too. Questions or comments?
I had a question about, in your information you provided on this, you included an email of one of the property owners being against this.
Mm-hmm.
Does that property owner have to give consent or can this happen regardless of...
Well, for right now, we're just putting a plan together to allow economic development to, one, look at some cost sharing, you know, for potential new road. Once we have some money and we start doing the final design, we'll nail down the alignment. In regards to the property owner, as we're defining alignment, we can look at other options of possibly not affecting him or minimizing it, but if we have to acquire the right of way, the city has tools in which way we can acquire the right of way.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call.
Clody Gzal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marks the PD.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubo.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Rocha.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance 1935.
And that's all I have for tonight if anybody has any other questions.
Any questions of city engineer?
Ron, thanks for all of your hard work on this project from the very beginning.
Okay, thanks, Ron. Moving on, community development. We have nothing, police department. We have Deputy Chief Jason O'Pole here this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have nothing on the agenda. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions of police department? Thank you. Nice and easy. Mayor's report, I have no agenda items, just a couple of updates. Last Friday was Veterans Day and my wife and I attended the, my wife and I attended the ceremony that was at the Post 1080 on Ingalls Avenue. It was very well done, there was a lot of Crest Hill residents that were present for that ceremony and the band, the American Legion Band was also there for musical entertainment. That was in the morning and then we went over to Willow Falls for their Veterans Day program. The Frankfurt Brass Band was the entertainment there. It was a very nice ceremony put on by Valerie and Darcy at Willow Falls also. So again, thank you to all our veterans for their sacrifices and service to their country and their community here in the City of Crest Hill. And then last Monday, I have the privilege of serving on the Joliet Port Authority at Lewis University for the last six years and the new control tower is up and it should be functional by the end of December. It's been long overdue. Luckily, there were no serious accidents without the traffic controllers there for many, many years. There's about 105,000 flights per year going in and out of that airport. So it's going to be a major improvement, it's going to be good for the region, for all the communities surrounding the airport. I know that there's a lot of misinformation that's being put out on Facebook and other items, the social media of gigantic planes such as the ones that are flying into Midway and appear landing on that runway. I will tell you that the two runways that are at Lewis, one is 6,500 feet long and the other one is 5,500 feet long. The only way a plane of that size would ever try to attempt to land at there is if it was in an emergency situation and would probably run far off the runway. So the size of planes will not, you will not see that, nothing much bigger than what has been happening over the past several years at that airport. The other requirement that is needed is the weight restriction and the large planes, the 747s and bigger are all way to, have too much weight to land on those runways. So, just wanted to spell any rumors that are out there and some misinformation that's being said on Facebook and social medias that that is not going, that is not the intent of the airport and that is not going to happen. Now, there mayor, there's probably going to be more flights that are going to be occurring at that airport since there is a traffic controller that's going to be there 16 of the 24 hours a day because a lot of the, a lot of the jets did not want to land without an air traffic controller in the past. But again, I think this is long overdue, it's a great improvement for our region, there's going to be a lot of economic boom coming from people that do fly into that airport and have to do business in the surrounding areas and all the communities will do well because of that. So that is the mayor's update. If there's any questions, I'll certainly try to answer them. Hearing none, we'll move on to the city clerk's report. Christine Rocha Hall.
Thank you. I have nothing to report, but upon clerk's office, we wish everybody a happy and safe Thanksgiving.
Any questions of the clerk's office?
Chris, how is it going with the rebate, rebate forms coming in from residences?
That's actually with the water slash treasurer's office, but they are coming in.
I was just wondering.
They're coming in.
If we're staffed adequately, you know, in the past, there's been some, with the greater volume of coming in, there was a little bit of feeling of both being overwhelmed. I just want to make sure we can handle it, we're handling it okay?
Oh, yeah.
Excellent.
I'll speak on Glenn's office, but I've seen the girls, yeah, they're handling it.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Moving on, city treasurer's report, Lon Hockland. Good evening, Glenn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I seek a motion to approve our list of bills from November 22nd, 2022 in the amount of
So moved as presented.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Motion by our other person, Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Dyke for the approval of the list of bills. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Marks the PD.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubo.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Rocha.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Clody Gzal.
Yes.
And Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
I thank you all for that. I'll just report our regular overtime payroll from October 24th, 2022 through the November 6th, 2022, that came in at the amount of $236,483.11. That's all I have other than wish everybody here and everybody out there a very merry, merry Thanksgiving.
Any questions of the treasurer's office?
Good night, all.
Okay, thanks, Lynn. Unfinished business, we have nothing on the agenda. Anybody? New business? Anyone? Committee liaison reports. Anybody?
Mayor, I'd just like to remind residents that we are doing our holiday decorating contest. The form is available on the city's website. Last date to submit entries is December 12th and we will be awarding prizes at the December 19th, regular city council meeting at 7:00 PM here. The judging will take place between December 13th and 18th. Thank you.
Okay, city council comments? Positive city council comments? Anything you'd like to share with your constituents? We begin with word one tonight, Alderman Dyke.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to wish all the residents, everybody here in the city, families, that they have a happy Thanksgiving, that they take time to think about all the things they have to be thankful for and also to think about, this is a season of giving, so if anyone has the ability to help give to others less fortunate, hopefully everybody's able to do that. Thank you.
Alderman Rocha.
I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and don't eat too much of that buzzard because it makes you tired.
Alderman Jefferson.
Yes, I'd like to just wish all the residents a happy Thanksgiving and have a safe and happy holiday season.
Alderwoman Gzal.
Just want to wish all the staff and elected officials and all the residents very blessed at Thanksgiving and sent, Mayor.
Our other person, Oberlin.
I would also like to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving and as Scott said, it is a season not only to be thankful for what you have, but to see what you can do for someone who isn't quite so fortunate as yourself. And on a personal note, I want to say a little rest in peace for Mr. Polly Fay from Plainfield.
Alderman Spitty.
I too would like to wish everybody, all the residents of Crest Hill and all city staff and everybody sitting up here with me in this room, wish you a happy and blessed Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Alderman Albert.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Alderman Kubo.
Happy Thanksgiving, Al.
Okay, just a couple of things I forgot. Under my report, you're going to be getting your water bill probably towards the end of the month, so inside of it is going to be our first newsletter past COVID. So the last newsletter we had, I believe, was the fall of 2020, so it's been a couple of years, so look inside your water bill for our newsletter and also the property tax rebate forms. If you have not filled that out, I believe that the deadline is the first week in December, so please fill those out and drop them off at the water department. Okay, moving on to public comment. If anyone would like to address city council, please step to the podium, state your name for the record, address is optional, just do anything. To our city attorney, Mike, is there any need for an executive session?
There is none.
Motion adjourned, Mayor.
We have motion for an adjournment by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Rocha. Roll call, please.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubo.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Rocha.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Clody Gzal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
And Marks the PD.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, meeting is adjourned at 7:40 PM. I wish everyone a very happy and blessed Thanksgiving.